Thank you for joining us. This is Inside Outreach. My name is Terron Epps and I'm here with John O'Brien. He's running for Comanche County Commissioner and I am here to talk to him about the seat and get more on his background. So, thank you for joining me. You're one of our first guests, one of the first five. So, you're in that elite club.
That's good. Thank you for having me.
Of course. So, I want to get to your background first. Where are you born? Where do you come from?
I was born in Sterling, Illinois and don't know much about Illinois. Left as a baby.
Okay.
Grew up in Florida, down Bradenton, Sarasota area. Spent basically my whole childhood there. And once joining the Army, I was gone and never looked back.
Okay. You joined the Army straight out of high school? That kind of situation?
Yes, I did. I left one month after I graduated.
What was your MOS?
Thirteen Fox.
Oh, artillery guy.
Yeah. Fister, for those of, the Fisters out there will know.
What made you want to join the Army? Was it a sense of service? Was it just I needed a job out there at high school? What was that? What was that driving factor?
It was a sense of service. It started as a dream to fly helicopters. But there was a little different parameters for vision back then. And that kind of fell through, so just went a different route and I absolutely loved it. And it's been my whole life now.
Yeah. What year did you join?
1986.
Oh, so you're, so you're in a time where there's not really much going on in the country and in the world as far as conflict's going.
Right.
If you fast forward through the 90s, still kind of low-key, and then 2001 happens. Where are you in 2001? What happens in your world?
2001, you talking about on 9/11?
Yeah.
I was actually in a break in service. I got out of that first enlistment after a few years and went to college and whatnot. And then I was working as a, you know, in the civilian workforce in North Carolina when that happened. And that was kind of the driving factor that told me to go back in.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that a lot of people don't realize this, but when there's a conflict happening, that that's really the recruitment. That's all the recruitment you need to get people in. 2001 happens. How long in the military are you in after that happens?
How long was I in afterwards? I just retired in 2015.
So, you've seen kind of the whole, not the whole conflict, but the majority of the early conflict pan out. What was your, what was your experience in that? I have, I have a lot of, a lot of friends, a lot of people that I've known just my whole life coming from a military family that, that served overseas, especially in the early part of the war. What was your initial thoughts about that conflict? Because after a while, you know, after the initial invasion of Afghanistan, Iraq, after the Baathist party was removed and we had to construct the country, there was a lot of dissent mentality. There was a lot of dissenting mentalities about the, about the stage of the conflict. What was your thought pattern after, you know, after it started just becoming, you know, low intensity stability operations?
It was kind of, it was confusing. It was, it was hard to deal with because we had went from one type of operation to another. Still comes with the same danger, with the same problems we had. But with stricter rules of engagement. And it just became worse and it became worse to where, you know, you almost, I mean, you almost felt helpless. You know, because if you fire a shot, you know, who knows? You might be going to jail.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, don't get me wrong, there's, there's always the, the, the idea of self-defense. So, you know, life-threatening, you know, you're in danger, you're in dire need, then there's always that still there for us.
Yeah.
But just generally speaking, if you're out and about and somebody starts shooting at you, you know, it made you think a lot before you returned fire. So, it was, it was tough for us because, you know, you know, we didn't know what could happen or what could come from a, you know, engagement with the enemy.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember watching a lot of those documentaries and reading a lot about the early days where the early days of Iraq and Afghanistan where American troops weren't really trained to do the the hearts and minds operations that you had to do. And of course, further on through the years, that, that got, that got help, right? With the, the, what was that book called? The General Madison Petraeus book, the, um...
Oh, uh...
The, I forget what it was, the counterinsurgency coin, the coin manual.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, after that, then, you know, we started picking up on those tactics. But yeah, it's, it's a crazy, and you came back as an officer at that time, right?
Well, when I went back in, I was enlisted once again. And then after a couple of years back in, then I went to OCS.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I've got like this crazy career story. It's just, it's insane.
What was your time as, because now you're, now you're at a leadership position, right? We're still at war. We're still in the, guys are still deploying. What was it like as a leader in that, in that scenario?
Uh, you mean as an officer?
Right.
Uh, I did not deploy as an officer. All my deployment was as an enlisted guy, as a thirteen fox. You know, the mentality was still there. The training was still there. And I was in a Patriot Missile Battalion, which, you know, they're, you know, they're still active right now.
Right.
So, there was always that, that thought of, you know, having to go and being somewhere, so prepping folks. And, you know, you got folks that were in under my leadership then were, you know, they hadn't been to Iraq or Afghanistan or Saudi Arabia or wherever. So, just from a leader standpoint and from having been there, it was just making sure the, the guys and gals that we had under us were always ready.
Right, right. What would you say from just a advice standpoint for, for a young leader? Not just in the military, but, but because, you know, obviously seeing, you know, being on the ground is very different from being in, in the leadership positions and the officer positions in the, in the military world. What would you, what would be your advice for leaders, especially now that we're going into a space where conflict might, might come back with Russia, China?
You say leaders in general though, not necessarily military, right?
Right. So, just, even in, in just the civilian world, because there's a lot of turmoil here in the US.
So, as a leader, I, I would say, first of all, be, be true and honest, you know, to yourself first. You know, know yourself and then after that, know your people, alright? Because everybody comes from, you know, different walks of life and we all handle things differently. So, know your people and, you know, be prepared to work through, you know, any situation with any given personality.
Right.
So, you know, jack of all trades, you know, that, that phrase goes a long way there because, you know, younger folks, especially nowadays, maybe a little more relaxed, complacent. Maybe they, you know, they've grown up in that period where, you know, things have kind of settled down, but they haven't. You know, we've got a lot of, like you said, things on the outside world, mass shootings and whatnot. So, they've experienced that. But, but yeah, know your people and, and always be thinking ahead, you know, about the potentials of what could happen and what might happen. I mean, we, we go through, you know, now you've got schools and businesses and whatnot doing, you know, mass, you know, mass shooter.
Right.
And, you know, take it seriously as a leader, first of all, and then, you know, just as an individual, you know, as a subordinate, whatever, but pay attention and know your surroundings.
Yeah.
I could go on and on, sorry, about, about, about leadership.
Yeah.
But it's a tough job and it's, it's a big responsibility, you know, if you take it seriously.
Yeah, no, it's, it's scary sometimes knowing that, you know, with all the, the things going on in the country, all the things going on around the world that we're not, we're not really in a time where, where we can be complacent. We have to have leaders. So, you, you, you do your service and then you, you leave the military. Where do you go? Do you go straight back here after the military? Where do you go?
Uh, when I retired, we were considering, well, we pretty much had. We had bought a house in North Carolina, where my wife is from, over in the Smoky Mountains. And that was going to be it. And we, we got there and things were great, you know, but I just kind of had that itch to go and do stuff once again. And I actually, so I took a job in Afghanistan, a security job. I looked at it like that, you know, one last shot to go, you know, be cool or, you know, whatever. I'm being kind of silly there, but yeah, it was a, it was a crazy job there in Kabul. And, and then eventually that fell through because the company I was working for didn't plan accordingly, didn't do things the way they were supposed to. So, that pretty much led me back here, 2000, late 2016. And since then, I've just kind of maintained my, my membership, if you will, in the FAA and the ADA community, because I served in both.
Right, right.
So, you know, now I'm, I'm afforded the opportunity to, you know, do a lot of things because I've got background in both of them.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, that, that makes sense, staying in that, that field. And, and the reality is a lot of people do. A lot of people get out of the military and go work for contractors overseas. So, it's just, yeah, I guess that it's, you got to still scratch at it sometimes, so...
I think sometimes, you know, us veterans together, we talk about it and we just, you know, we'll admit that we probably wouldn't work out well in a, you know, some corporate office somewhere. Just because it's not, that's not what we're about.
Right.
So, I, but I also enjoy, you know, I've been an instructor since I retired. You know, out there with new equipment, taught here at the Captain's Career Course. Then I've contracted, still kind of in a teaching mode over in Germany and last year over in Sweden. So, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. I just enjoyed, you know, kind of that last little bit of traveling and I'm over it though.
Yeah.
We're, we're done, you know, my wife and I have had to spend lots of time apart and we decided it was time to, you know, put a kibosh on that and settle down.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can imagine. I can imagine. So, you, you settle down for here, you settle down here in, in Comanche County for a while and then you make the decision that you want to run for county commissioner. Where, what leads to that decision? What is that, what is the spark for, for wanting to go into that world? Because that's a completely different world.
Well, I've always had, I've always had the itch for politics.
Okay.
However, you know, still no background in it. But, you know, realize that you kind of got to start small, you know? So, first thing I thought of was, you know, something, you know, city council, whatever, but well, I don't live in the city. So, that was out. And from there, kind of left it alone for a little while, didn't really pursue it much more. But what really led me to it was when I came back from Sweden last year, I went to work as a deputy for Comanche County Sheriff's Department. And I was working in the courthouse and just all the things I heard and all the things I was seeing and stories I was hearing and I was, I'd go home every day and tell my wife, like, gosh, you wouldn't believe what I heard today. And I'm not talking about crime or, or whatnot. I'm talking about just things in general that you would hear in passing conversations, things going on in the county or things that aren't happening in the, and then, mind you, I was working at the, the front door. You know, scanning people in and whatnot. So, you know, about every third one of them wants to stay, stay and talk for a minute and, you know, tell you why they're there, ask you questions. And so, they would talk to me. And, and I just started hearing all these crazy things and that led me into kind of investigate, you know, what I was hearing.
Right.
I had to go educate myself because we can't just, you know, run around off of hearsay. And, you know, not, not that I, you know, initially discovered anything, you know, you know, crazy, egregious, if you will, but the more I went, the more crazy it got. And I started just talking to people, friends that I knew that have been here their whole life. You know, and then I started looking at, okay, well, if I'm going to do this, I'm going to be on the east side. So, you know, and it's, it's that time, it's coming up for election. And I started looking at my opponent and, and learning all I could about the east side of Comanche County. And just decided that, you know, it was time to stop being the person that's, you know, sits there and goes, man, if I was, if I was in charge, I'd do this.
Right.
So, I made that decision to pursue this. You know, and the thing I like to tell people is, you know, I was, I've been a commander twice in the Army. You know, I've done other things. I've, I've been, you know, king for a day, if you will.
Right.
Or a few days. And so, this isn't about power.
Right.
You know, it's not about money. It's, uh, it's about trying to just, you know, it's almost like a give back. And it may seem kind of cheesy or cliche, but, you know, let me give back and try and help folks. So, and it's, it's a, you know, it's a service in a different way. And maybe that's what it is. I'm just, you know, born to kind of serve in some capacity. And then the further I, I went and the, you know, I started gathering, you know, folks getting on, on board with me and really reading and talking more to people and going online and then looking at other counties and looking at the way things ran elsewhere. And I was just like, you know, we need a change. You know, things, things could be better here. And but the, the thing I was seeing was I don't think they're going to get better. They're going to just kind of coast the way they are. And that's, that's my, you know, my, my problem with, you know, 24 years in office. It's, that's too long. We need, we have term limits for a reason.
Right.
Now, we don't have them for that position, but I would certainly vote for them. Because nobody needs to be in office that long.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you had a, a real service desire. Wasn't, I just wanted to be in politics and see one of my face on, on a card somewhere. But it was the, the service desire. And, and so, help to, help me to inform the listener and inform myself. The way I think it works is there's three co-equal commissioners. Is that right?
Yes.
So, and they're broken up into different zones?
Three districts.
Three districts, okay. And you're District One, right?
Yes.
So, that's, that's the eastern?
Eastern side.
Okay.
And it's, it's pretty much split right down the middle, north and, north and south. And, you know, District Three is on the west side. And District Two is, it's kind of just that hub right there. You know, take a, you know, a cylinder and set it over the courthouse. And that's District Two.
And District Two is most of Latin, if I'm correct?
Not really, because outside the courthouse there, before you exit the city limits, you know, that's, that's the city. That's, you know, city policing, city utilities, city roads, city government. So, Mr. Owens, who's the District Two Commissioner, he, you know, he kind of administrates that, the courthouse footprint, if you will, you know, which encompasses the, you know, the sheriff's department's in there and the county, you know, the treasurer, the clerk of court, the county clerk, your election board, all those offices nestled in there in the courthouse. So, he just co-equal, like you said. But his, his thing is he doesn't have a, you know, a barn, a county barn with equipment and whatnot.
Right.
Because he doesn't have any, there's no roads that come with his job. And it's interesting fact is, uh, Comanche County is one of only three out of 77 in the state that only has two road districts. Tidbit, fact.
Oh, that's, that's, okay. So, I'm, I'm building the picture in my head because I don't really remember what the districts look like. So, that's just helping me to, to... Yeah. So, now that you're, so you win, now that you're in a position to, to influence things. What are some of those, what are some of those big, those big ticket items for, for a county commissioner? Um, I'd imagine that the county commissioner is dealing with obviously the sheriff and, and what's going on in their world. But what are some of the big ticket items that, uh, that you would want to focus on?
Like me specifically?
Yeah.
My agenda? First big thing is public safety. You know, some people were, you know, beat me up there for a little while early on because they, you know, they, they asked me if I was running for sheriff.
Right.
Because I was talking a lot about the sheriff's department.
Right.
And I, so I had to kind of adjust my, you know, talking points and whatnot. But obviously, it's near and dear to me. I'm still a reserve deputy. But the problem with the sheriff's department and why I was kind of beating that drum was, you know, it is hard to hire deputies. It's hard to keep them. You know, they don't make squat. Uh, you know, pretty much the, I don't mean to joke about it, but the running joke is, you know, a guy delivering pizzas can make more money than a deputy sheriff.
Right.
So, with that being said, we, you know, Comanche County is 1,100 square miles. And at most every given moment, there's only two deputies and possibly a third, based on maybe what day of the week it is. You know, you got a little more crime on Friday night, Saturday night and whatnot. So, two, two people covering 1,100 square miles. If, if the guy on the west side is on a call in Indiana, Oklahoma and his backup is coming from Sterling or North Fletcher, you know, lights and siren 90 miles an hour, that's a 45-minute ride. Whatever was going on is over with already. Good, bad, or indifferent. Anyway. So, public safety, that's the sheriff's department piece. The volunteer fire departments, they don't get hardly any money out there. The funny thing about this, well, I gotta choose a different word. The interesting thing, maybe even disheartening thing about where the volunteer fire departments get their money is it comes out of a portion of our sales tax. And some time ago, it was sold to the people to increase the sales tax, you know, some, some little portion.
Right.
It was sold to the, to the constituents as a safety tax. It was going to help the volunteer fire departments. Well, everybody was like, that's awesome. You know, they need help. They're, you know, they're, they're volunteering their time and...
Yeah.
Well, a little known fact, of that money, of that percentage of that 9% sales tax, 80% of that money that they, you know, sold as a safety tax is going to fund the jail. So, that leaves us 20%. Of that 20%, 26% of that, we'll call it a quarter, goes to 20, gets split up amongst 20 volunteer fire departments. So, long, you know, the gist of it is of that safety tax, 5% of it gets split 20 ways. And that's how they're get, that's how they get their funding. And they also have, uh, there's an annual grant that comes out, $5,000, give or take, on any given year. You know, and then that's why they got to do fundraisers and whatnot. So, so volunteer fire departments, sheriff's department, EMS, you know, Elgin just put together a good deal with Kirk's EMS service that's going to help out. But, you know, we can always use more help there. So, public safety. Uh, next thing would be the budget, the county budget. You know, there's, I don't want to go too far in the weeds, but, you know, the county budget comes from property taxes. So, of the amount that everybody pays in property taxes, 10-point-something percent is the general fund. And that's mandated by the state. And so, that's what runs the courthouse in the sheriff's department.
Right.
Uh, so, my thing with the budget is I've, I've studied the budget, the, this past one for three or four months now. And, you know, I can't say that anything's really wrong with it. But what I can say is that I think we can shuffle some funds from one department to another. You know, a department that's kind of doing alright and they're carrying money forward, which, hey, don't get me wrong. You know, everybody likes to have a kitty, you know? We all have a savings account.
Right.
But if you've got another area in your purview that's hurting for funds, you know, maybe we can shift some of that. And then my third thing, if you will, is, you know, the, the county barn and roads and bridges. There's a lot of good folks out there at the barn that know what they're doing. And what I would say is that they could probably use a little more guidance, a little more, you know, careful how you word things. I say supervision, but just oversight, so that they have somebody to turn to if they reach a sticking point. You know, they got somebody to turn to there. And along with that, I think with roads and road maintenance, we need some preventative measures. We need a plan, a long-range road plan, if you will, that, that kind of gets revisited every five years. But that, that lets us rotate around and kind of cover everybody instead of just hopping around and, well, this road's got six or eight potholes. Let's go throw some asphalt on them. And, you know, then, oh, by the way, you know, that's, having our road plan will take care of everybody, not just our friends and political allies.
Yeah, yeah.
So, everybody needs to be taken care of. Everybody's road needs to be, whether it's, you know, gravel needs graded, needs more gravel, or a road needs paved, or another thing too is understanding when a road is beyond patching and that's resurface it. It's, it's fill the potholes and it's, it's put another coat on. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, that makes, that makes perfect sense. Yeah. I want to, I want to go back to that first, that first, because you, you did three points. You did, you know, public safety, uh, some, some budgetary analysis. That way we can figure out something and then our, our county barn and, and roads and, and infrastructure. But that, that first point, the, the public safety, I think it's getting better from maybe when, you know, you, you were growing up, from just the conversations I have with police officers. But, you know, the, the pay is probably a big thing. And then the morale is a big thing. It's probably inhibiting some, some, uh, people from coming into that field. Because if you want new people, right, especially new young people, right, people in their twenties and thirties, you know, they, they want to, they want something that's going to pay decent. And they don't need Lamborghinis and mansions, but they need something that pays decent. And then they, they, they want something that's not going to be, they don't necessarily want to be vilified for the, for the job that they can do.
Right.
Why, I, I don't understand really like how, how, you know, police departments are facing. And because this is a problem with police departments all across the country. How are police departments, even sheriff's departments, even, even facing, uh, trying to figure out a way to, to get recruitment back? uh, uh, trying to figure out a way to, to get recruitment back, uh, you know, a lot of challenges that they've been facing these past few years?
Fortunately, I think there's a lot of people out there that want to serve in that capacity. Uh, you know, maybe half of us young men is, is kids wanting to be a, you know, policeman or a fireman or whatever. So I think that the, the itch is there. Um, but how do we recruit them? That's a very good question because now I'd say that LPD, they don't have much, I mean, they'll probably say, they maybe say that they have a recruitment problem. I'm not for sure. I can't speak for them. Um, but their pay is, is much, much better. The sheriff's department, uh, recruiting is a, a big problem and you know, all you can do is, is try and bring folks on board. That have that itch. Oftentimes it might be somebody moving into the area. It could be a guy that retires from the military. Uh, but it's very hard because I mean, they make about sixteen fifty an hour. And you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing to swallow to go out and you know, chase down bad guys and get shot at or deal with, you know, the mentally ill or, you know, child abuse and whatnot for sixteen bucks an hour. Um, and then on top of that, retaining them is, is tough. You know, they, they gotta feed their family. And, you know, I can't speak for the sheriff, but, uh, I know that it's, it's tough for him. And the ed, you know, administrative part of the department. You know, what do they say to a guy that says, hey, I can go and make, I can make ten more dollars an hour. You know, that's a lot. That's four hundred bucks a week. You know? So, uh, you know, you asked me, you know, how, you know, how do we go about recruiting folks? You know, like I said, I think there's still the folks that want to serve in that capacity. They want to do good things for their community. They might know of a way, you know, whether it's they grew up in a, a wrecked home or a drug environment or whatnot that maybe they want to go and use that knowledge and that to help fight that. So nobody else has to go through it. Then I think there's also the folks that had somewhat of a, a different life growing up that maybe just feel the need to go out and help folks that are struggling with those things. So we've got to, you know, we've got to be out there. I mean, I say we, um, I'm sure they try to get out there and, and you can't really, you know, I guess you can't really hit up the high schools. But maybe, you know, be finding, uh, you know, a way to, to find the guys coming out of the military. Sometimes you're younger guys, serve a couple of years and, you know, maybe they don't have a, a plan. Um, so use, use those resources on post. Um, and there's other channels, I guess, where they can recruit. Um, but going back to what you said, there's a lot of crazy, bad things happening nowadays. So, uh, you know, finding somebody that, you know, they may want to battle that. But, you know, after that first battle, they, they might be like, no, I don't, you know, this isn't for me. So you gotta, you gotta be, you know, picky.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah. I mean, it's, it's up, up uphill battle and, and I think that, uh, and, and this is just information I'm getting from people in the field. So this is not firsthand information, but they're, they're still, police departments are still, you know, pretty, pretty selective on, on who they get. Um, so, yeah, so it, it's, it's an interesting, uh, a, a conversation about how to, how to build, especially nowadays when, when people are so fearful of mass shootings. And sucks that that has to be kind of on the, the forefront, but you know, that's going to be one of those situations that I think is going to be, you know, especially for the next sheriff's, uh, uh, election that comes up. That's going to be a, a, a topic and, and how, how we rebuild that. So do you think there is an avenue for us increasing maybe the, 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 maybe going to the budget and figuring out ways to actually, you know, put more funds into public safety or is that something that, cause most municipalities have a, a substantial amount of their budget going towards police, fire, EMT, um, because nobody's safe and that's kind of the, when that's kind of gone and everything else kind of goes. So i- is there a way for us a- as a community to funnel more funds there or is there a way for us to increase maybe a, a, um, I don't want to say increase a tax, but is there a way for us to, to figure out a way to get some, some more money going that way?
Excuse me. That's, that's one of the things that, you know, I've been trying to look at and, uh, you know, that's, that's part of where my statement comes from, where we can shuffle some funds. Um, we've got to, uh, we've got to try. We've got to do our best. Uh, I don't, uh, want, or I, I, I will not, you know, vote for higher taxes. Um, but we've got to figure out a way to, to, yeah, shuffle some of those funds. Uh, and, and a long-term goal of mine is to, uh, is to go, you know, fight at the state level. And, and find out why, you know, why can we not increase this general fund? Um, now they may, you know, tell me it's a, you know, cause the, the lot in public schools gets like seventy-six percent of the, you know, property taxes. And there's a, you know, ten percent that's spread out amongst the municipalities and about two and a half percent for the health department. Uh, so it's, it's tough, but we've got to try. Um, my, my opinion is that in the recent past that the, uh, commissioner's office has not been so willing to try to help with that. Now, one thing that's kind of saving some, some of this, uh, problem we have is the American Rescue Plan Act. It just, you know, we get the funds for that. And it's allowing them to buy, you know, newer updated radios for, you know, the sheriff's department, the volunteer fire departments and whatnot. Um, cause they were using stuff that was, you know, so outdated, it almost doesn't work. You know, the technology was lacking. Uh, so that helped out. But now we need to tackle and figure out how do we figure out a way to pay the folks more. And again, that's a long-term goal of mine. You know, some people might tell me, you know, you might as well not even waste your time. But there's gotta be a way for us to bring that, that scale of pay up. It's, it's so far below the national average that it, it would actually just, it's disheartening.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you just want to go do something else. I mean, just go work for another police department or? Yeah, no, it's, there's a lot of complexities to.
Yeah, there is.
There's a lot of complexities to that world. And, and, yeah, I think the budgetary part and I, and, and they're all, they're all interrelated. Right? So the budgetary factor leads into the app, the infrastructure and, and leads into the public safety. Do you think that there's, so is there a, um, is there a difference? Well, I know there's a difference, but i- is there a way that, um, the county and the, the city of Lawton are working together on, on budgetary now, or, or, on their budgets or they're completely, they're completely separated?
Uh, completely separate, uh, you know, accounts, if you will. Um, there are things that the county can sometimes assist with, with the, uh, with the city. Um, generally speaking, I don't believe the city goes out to try and help, you know, big brother, if you will. It's just not, you know, it's not feasible. But from my understanding, and you know, don't quote me on this one, and I'm not saying this is completely right. But from my understanding, you know, Lawton has a, you know, substantial amount of money coming in. Um, you know, hence they can, they can pay their folks pretty decent money. So that being said, it leads me to believe that, you know, the county doesn't necessarily need to help the city so much. And, you know, Lord help me, somebody can take that statement and run with it. But, uh, what I'm trying to say is, um, I think Lawton can do pretty well on its own. The county is struggling. So it's going to be hard for the county to help the city. Um, and, uh, you know, one other thing, just we're talking about the budget and taxes and whatnot. An interesting piece of this that people don't understand either is that, um, and this is educational for everyone out there. Your property taxes have nothing to do with maintaining roads and bridges. The barn gets its own separate fund from the state, from the, well, from the fuel tax. So, and you can argue and go, well, I'm paying the fuel tax. Well, yeah, you are in a, in a sense. But, uh, you know, people are like, well, I pay my, you know, I might pay my property taxes and my road's terrible. Um, well, that's true, probably on both accounts, but, but they're not, you know, intertwined. You know, they have a whole separate budget that pays the employees, buys equipment, paves roads, you know, whatever. So roads and bridges and the barn, almost like you might as well just act like they don't exist because it's, they're not getting funded by you paying your property taxes. So it's, it's just, I'm saying that as an educational.
No, I mean, that, that, and that's one of those things is, is the, the way it works with the budgets are, I think that's the, the, cause people will always, the, the reality is, and I, I realized this when I went up to, um, to the cap, to state capitol and talked to, uh, Senator Garvin is that, that the, the nuts and bolts of, of, of running a, a, a running, um, city, town, state is, is allocations, appropriations, right? And, and that's, that's always challenging because you, you have limited money and everything takes a lot of money to run. So it's, it's one of those things where it's, it's, can we shuffle and, and, and get this money here? Can, can we self-help and get this money there? I, I, I think, and, and me and the mayor talked about this, was we have to build these long-term plans more so than just these overnight plans. And I think that's what people want is these overnight plans. Do you have any thoughts about any like long-term, even, you know, beyond you, just anything that, that we as a, a, a community can place that's going to be beneficial to the future generations?
Well, so, you know, that's the number one thing about this job to me is that we need to make a change now so that, you know, our kids and our grandkids, I say, you know, basically our children and our future uh, have something to go on. Uh, if we continue along the path we're on, I don't see us getting there. So that's why I'm talking this, this, we need a change and you know, this isn't necessarily a tangible item, but this is part of my long-term goal and part of my legacy. If I'm, if I'm elected and whenever it is that I'm gone, um, I certainly don't plan to spend twenty-four years in office myself. Um, so, uh, but, but this non-tangible thing, two things is, uh, is putting trust back in the citizens, you know, trusting our local government. And the other part of it is transparency. People, people want information. They want to know. That's why we have shows like yours. So people can get educated. Um, we don't have transparency right now. Uh, we have a terrible website, okay? Information could be easily disseminated right there at that one stop point. So that's, those are the two things. I want people to trust the government. Because, you know, sadly enough, and this isn't, you know, this isn't new news and I didn't just think of this, but we've got a, a serious good old boy problem. And the problem with that is it's not taking care of everybody. You know, the district itself has probably, well, if we just split the population of Comanche County in half, we'll call it sixty-some thousand people. Um, so, you know, we need all sixty thousand to benefit from whatever it is we're doing. So trust in the government and transparency, whether it be people openly seeing things being done correctly. You know, not feeling like, you know, the wool's been pulled over their eyes. And also that collaboration of, you know, information from, from county office to, you know, Mr. Voter. So that, that's what I want to see in place because right now it's, 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 it's non-existent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, and that's, that's coming straight. I, I've been out, you know, Toronto, I've been out knocking doors for three months. And I've talked to probably three thousand plus people. And I'm going around hitting their doors again, just a warning to everybody, I'm coming back. Uh, but what I hear is that, you know, they, they don't know what's going on. So that's why I've made it a point to try and put that in place. And nobody feels like, well, you know, the government's shady. And, 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 and I've had a lot of people telling me like, man, you, you, you've kind of lost it. Cause, uh, you know, all government, all politicians are crooked and doing shady things and well, maybe it's time we try to change it. And we gotta change it, you know, bottom up. So call me crazy and I suspect I won't have a lot of friends for a while. Uh, but if I'm doing right by the citizens, I'll do without a handful of friends that weren't friends to begin with.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that's one of those, those, i- 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 it's, it's like, you have people who say, well, all politicians are corrupt. Well, I mean, at the end of the day, it's like, well, what are you? Are you either going to keep complaining or are you gonna, they're gonna get, throw your towel in the, towel in the ring and, and actually try to change it because it's not going to change itself? And, you know, the, like you said, twenty-four years, uh, that's, that's, once you're in that, that space for twenty-four years, you, you've probably cemented some, some habits that might not be.
You're very comfortable. And probably complacent. And while you still may have good intentions or, uh, you know, whatever, I, I, I just think that, you know, my opponent maybe hasn't necessarily advanced with, you know, the twenty-four years of, of time and, and change and things. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sitting here, you know, bad mouthing or slinging mud, but it, it just, it's up, it's about change. And the change has to start probably with the person in the seat. And then we go from there.
Yeah. Cause you, you have to keep it because things change in society. So the people who are trying to run those communities have to grow and change with them.
But, you know, I would just ask folks to, you know, hang in there, have faith in your government. And let's, uh, you know, let's work together and, you know, my deal is, and, and, you know, Mr. Turner is the same way. He, he, he has an open door. He's got his phone number out there. Um, but I would say, you know, use it, call. You know, it's hard for people, the working guy and gal, you know, not everybody can just go to the commissioner meetings, but if you have the chance, go to one. Now, it's not real exciting. Um, and that's not a dig at the commissioners. It's, it's their gig. It's their meeting. Where they kind of, you know, look at a few items on the agenda, but if you go online, look at the agenda, maybe you see something you're interested in. You know, and you can go there and speak. I think there's a, there's a common misconception that the only way you get to speak at the commission meetings is if you submit like a, you know, some kind of formal agenda of your own ahead of time. Now, if you're trying to get into the weeds on something really crazy, that's probably true. But just to go and sit and listen and then go, hey, listen, I, I've lived out on, you know, C Street for ten years and I've never seen a bit of asphalt put on my road or whatever. Uh, that's your chance. Maybe they don't know about it. Maybe you've never brought it up except to your neighbors and you guys all stand around and complain about it, but don't go tell anybody. So, uh, yeah, just utilize those folks. That's what they're there for. So, and that's, that's my intent is again, is that transparency, you know? I just want to be out and about. People can. I just wanna be out and about. People can come up and go, hey, what about this? And I, I, I got it. It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
You know, cause you're gonna have to tell some people no.
Right.
But you gotta tell them that. Don't tell them, well, yeah, 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 we'll get to that in a couple of weeks and then never show up.
Yeah.
Or never return their phone call.
And that goes back to that building the trust.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it, people don't, I don't, I don't know if people know this, but like. Your, your city council meetings, you can go to those or your state, even your, uh, the state capital, the senator and representative. When they get together and do their, their hearings, you can go to those. They have seats there for the people and it's like, so it's not. We are, are a, a society, um, as, as Americans, we are, we, we complain on, on, on the internet. We're not, we're not, we don't do enough of actually just getting to know the people in charge.
Right. Yeah, we just look at it and go, gosh, they, you know, I don't know, they're horrible. They, they, they're not doing, you know, whatever. Well, you know, yes, their hands are tied at times. And unless you get in there, uh, and get in there, I mean, go sit and listen sometime.
Yeah.
You know, and educate yourself. Unless you get in there and do that, you're never gonna understand.
Right.
You know, so, you know, not all politicians are corrupt. And that's what I think people would learn if they got a little better educated and talked to some of them. Uh, now, hey, I'll admit it, there's, I believe that there's many, many of them out there that. Don't care about the people.
Right.
You know, they're the, either it's a stepping stone to the next level or it's a, you know, they've managed to get in, you know, somebody's pocket. And further their, you know, el- elaborate lifestyle, whatever. I'm, you know, there's so many different things. But there are people that care and, uh, and that's, that's why I tell people. You know, as we talked about, I think before we started, I'm not a politician. You know, it just comes with the, with the job if, if elected. You know, I'm a, I'm a person that cares, you know, a person that, uh, you know. I'm not independently wealthy.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just, uh, out here making a living like everybody else and I have, uh. You know, visions of bringing some leadership that'll maybe make lives, lives, you know, quality of life better for everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, that's when we need more of that.
Yeah.
Be honest with you.
And I, and again, you know, I know, you know, I'm. I'm a, a common man, so, uh, but. You know, I'm, I'm speaking from the heart when I say that, you know, that's, that's work together, you know. Let me be in there representing you and work together to, you know. Like I said, increase that quality of life. Some people are like, well, my road's fine. I don't care. I'm like, well, what about, what about the road going to your mama's house? You know, or what if your friends wanna come over here? Do they travel some crazy, obnoxious, you know. Bumpy road getting here. So, you know. There's a, there's a reason we have, you know, plans and reason why we prioritize and whatnot. And I got it. We can't fix everything right now, today. But with a long-term plan, a long-range road plan is what I kind of call it. You know, five years and I may not even see the end of it.
Yeah.
You know, I might be out after four. But at least try and have that established where everybody knows that there's a plan to in, in. You know, evaluate your infrastructure around where you live and travel. And know that it's gonna get addressed somehow or another over the next five years.
Oh, yeah. And then once people see it and they see what, and they like what they see and.
Right.
Even if the next guy comes in, he's not gonna stop it.
Right, exactly. So, you know, I'm, I'm not a genius and I didn't, you know. Most, most people could come up with this on their own and go, well, yeah, we just gotta have a, a plan.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's the problem right now is we, we don't have a plan. And now the, you know, they have a plan right now and I gotta say this, you know, uh. You know, there ain't been nothing going on with roads in quite some time.
Yeah.
And then, you know, there's a, there's a deal with, you know, time of the year, temperature-wise. But, uh, I just find it, you know, interesting that, say, compared to last year. Uh, there's a whole lot more roadwork going on right now.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Now that the election's here, so. Sorry.
It's a game, it's just a game. I, I get it.
Yeah, so that's, uh, you know, that's, that's just fix it. Let's fix things and that's, that's move forward and that's better. The place that we all live and, you know, work and gather and and whatnot and. It doesn't, and you know, again, too, with the, you know, we have to have a party associated with this, you know, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Because the commissioner's office is really a, a, it's a nonpartisan. Once you're in the seat. It's three, three people working together for the people.
Right.
So, you know, I say, set aside this, you know, party divide nonsense, you know, unfortunately, we gotta follow the rules and. They are what they are and, you know, we only get to count on, you know, the Republicans voting for us, you know, here in a couple of weeks, but. You know, again, look, look down the road and think about, you know. What, what you really believe in. If we have to have these party lines. Then maybe reevaluate what, what you think is, is right.
Yeah.
Try and align yourself based on your own beliefs and values, not just. What the state used to be or what your mom and dad were or, you know, what Uncle Billy says, you know. Be your own person.
Right.
And get out there and change your, your status or change your party or at least get out there and register and vote, so.
Yeah, when's the, um, the primary? The primaries, I guess, something, August.
We had the primary. Uh, this is the runoff.
Okay.
August twenty-third. Yeah, about two and a half weeks, so it's, uh, it's crunch time and, you know, the, the nonsense starts flying and. You know, we, uh. You know, we've, we've tried to run a clean race and, uh, and everybody pretty much has. I'm not. I'm not gonna say that somebody's out there being crazy.
Uh, what I realize is that at, at local elections, you don't really have that much of that. Once you start getting state and general.
Right.
Um, state and and federal elections, that's when it starts getting, but at local elections, you live like down the street from this. Say all this crazy stuff that you lived down the street from.
So, yeah, two weeks out, pretty much, uh, two weeks from Tuesday.
Yeah.
Coming up. So, yeah, everybody, you know, please get out there and vote because, uh, it's, it's, it's a well-known fact. That when we get into a runoff situation. The number of voters tapers off by like fifty percent.
Yeah.
So folks out there, if you're listening, just, just go vote. I mean, you, you only, you only got two things you're, you're voting on. Mr. Turner, myself, and you know that you should check my box on that one. And, uh, then we've got, uh. Uh, Mr. Mullin and T W Shannon. That's kind of the two, two things on your ballot coming up. And I think there's gonna be some, uh, some school, couple of school things, some, uh. Bonds, I think, but, I mean, it's all important.
Yeah.
But what we normally fall into a trap of is, you know, okay, well, it's the runoff. You know, maybe it's not so important, you know, if it's not the president or the governor or something involved, a lot of people are like, yeah, I don't care. Well, you gotta care. You know, it's, it's your backyard, you know.
All politics are local.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it, it's been, it's been great having you on and and I really appreciate your time and and I know, uh, I know you'll do great. Um, I, I hope to, to, to see you on the ballots here in a, in a, in a couple, couple of weeks. When is the general election? That's.
General is in, uh, November.
November, okay.
Yeah, uh. Prob- well, I guess it's the first Tuesday in November. I don't know what it is this year, but. Yeah, general election, which, you know, ours, the commissioner, it'll be over with, uh, here in the runoff. Uh, we don't have a Democrat.
Right.
Uh, running, so it's.
So it's.
It's win, lose or draw right here in two more weeks.
Yeah.
So, uh, but yeah, thank you for having me. It's, it's been fun. It's, uh, it's good to just kind of speak. And maybe not necessarily have so much of an agenda. Just speak openly and and talk about how we can make things better.
Of course, of course.
So, yeah, thanks, Taron, a lot.
I, I do appreciate you coming on.
And tell your dad thanks for his service. He's still in?
He's not.
Oh, he's retired, right?
Yes, he's been, he's been out for three years.
Okay, alright.
So it's, it's good. Alright, this has been the Inside Outreach Podcast. My name is Taron Epps. I was here with Connor O'Brien. And, uh, we are good.